And everybody else. Waiting for the great president to arrive.
Shannon, are you back?
Um, yes, I am back and I'm here now. Forever.
Relatively speaking.
Yeah.
Hi Steve.
But I will never on go away in July again because we missed so much of the swim team.
It's working out here.
Right.
Is it all here me now?
Yes.
Yeah. Okay, good evening, everyone. Matt's coming downstairs now, so.
And here he is.
Okay, I know that it's seven o'clock and I'm. Going to call the meeting to order. I, I think that. First. The, the president had a question of the town attorney.
Hi Ron, this is Steve. Just wanted to make sure that it's okay for us to proceed with this meeting. Starting at seven o'clock as opposed to the five o'clock that was posted in the town announcement. There's just a typographical error, but I don't know if that's an issue with regards to the open meetings app.
No, no, it's, it's quite all right. Matt has sent out a clarification.
Perfect. And, and. We're just discussing things. We're not voting on anything anyhow. Okay, thank you very much, Ron.
And there's no public. Input. So that's your ruling, Mr. Town Attorney that.
Yes, Mr. Mayor and. And the meeting's being recorded, so. It will be available for anybody who. Who wants to see it but couldn't because of the. The typo.
Perfect. Thank you very much, Ron.
Okay, good. Well, thank you. And I want to thank our council president for asking that very important question. So before I turn it over to him. To conduct the work session, I would like to ask our town manager to read the disclaimer.
Yeah. Just a quick reminder to residents and any other participants that this meeting is being recorded. So we'll post it on the town website. Generally speaking, these council work sessions are limited to discussion among the council members. But if you'd like, you can use the raise hand feature. And send a message to me and I can try to convey that as well. If this meeting does get interrupted, we'll immediately end it and send out new instructions on a meeting via email. So with that, turn it back over to.
With that, Council President Circo, you have the floor. You have the gavel.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. Okay, um. The, the first thing I'd like to do is just. Add something to the agenda that was listed, something that Debbie Hubler and I had talked about, and that is. Disabled access to the town hall. This became clear to us during. The. July Fourth festivities. That the way the. The garden is set up around the town hall. There is no easy way for somebody who is handicapped. To get to our ramps. To get up to the town hall. And I don't think we have a lot to discuss about this. I think it's just really a question of. If, if the council sort of concurs with this idea to ask the town manager to explore some options. On what we can do to remedy the situation. Debbie, do you have any comments or thoughts to add?
You're, you're on mute, Debbie.
I, I, I watched in horror at the, um, at, at the July Fourth meeting, at the town hall gathering. Them lifting Johnny Coleman up in his wheelchair to get into the town hall from the grass so he could roll out. And I said to them, what's going on? They said, there's no accessible way in, and there is an easy way in. Matt, I'd be happy to come in and, and share some ideas, you know, um, with you. So I wanted to add that, but. I don't know if we want to put this on, on another agenda. Steve, when I spoke with Catherine Coleman, she told me there are actually two other places in town that are not accessible. And if you want to put that on another agenda, that would be fine. Or Matt, maybe I should just come in and share it with you and then we can talk about. You know, what we should do about it. What do you think?
So she has pointed out. There's a, there's a crosswalk or something that. Given that this would involve. The, the two that I think she's referring to involve a capital expenditure, so that. Maybe needs to be deferred to when you have next year's budget. And you do the capital. Then in terms of the town hall, maybe the best thing would be to charge Matt with. Coming up with a plan that could be. And maybe there's money in the budget for that. I don't, I don't know, but. But thank you. I'm glad you pointed that out. I, I doubt that when that. Accessibility was designed years ago, that it was done by. In a, in a. In a professional way.
Right. Okay, I'll come, I'll, I'll make an appointment with you, Matt, see what's good for you and we'll come in and talk about it, okay?
Sounds good.
Perfect. Thank you very much. So moving on with the regular agenda that was posted, I believe the next item is the. Is the audit? Can, can you give us an, an update or some particulars now?
Sure, so. Just. By way of quick little background, the. The state of Maryland requires all municipalities to undergo an independent audit, and so our contract was up. We received bids from. Four different. Companies. And. I have reviewed the proposals with our audit committee. We followed up on. Some of the references. And met with. Lindsay and Associates, who actually were. The town of Somerset's auditors for. Several years, if not many years. I believe. Going back to twenty. Twenty seventeen. And at that point. They had been the town's auditors for. I, I think it was ten, ten years or so, and as, as a matter of good governance, the council at that time thought it made sense to at least do one contract with somebody else. Now that that contract's up. They were the, the most affordable option, had, have strong references. Had a history in the town and a good, good marks with the town, and so. Myself and the. And the audit committee. Are recommending that we go ahead with Lindsay and Associates and sign a contract with them.
Thank you, Matt. So the idea is that. Unless there are any issues or questions folks have, we would put this onto the consent, consent agenda for the next meeting.
Yeah, I don't see any problems with that.
Same here. Great. Apologies, I'm sort of. Frantically trying to restart my computer. This is an issue I've had for a long time. I use my government laptop to. To open up the various emails we have and schedules and agendas. And my system automatically does a reboot at 7:00 PM every night. So I have to restart. So I'm backed up. The next item is Thrive Montgomery 2050. The idea was to just have. A brief discussion here at the council on. How we want to engage residents. How much we want to try to weigh in on the topic at the county level. And I don't know, do we have any council members that want to?
Before you have a discussion, can I, can I?
Yes, please.
So, so. I, I've been talking to several of you and I, I think it's apparent that you all would like. To find a way to educate our residents so that. You can decide in the future as a council whether you want to take position on Thrive 2050. And I think what we had talked about in the, in the meeting, we, we call that the leadership meeting now, everyone. The one between me and. The president and Matt, the town manager to, to. Work on these agendas. But anyway. I, I think the, the proposal was that. That in September, because I think that August wouldn't be the appropriate time. The town. Council would sponsor a, a panel. To where there would be someone from the planning department. There would be some advocates on each side and they would present, they would present, and then there would be questions and answer and. And, and that way it would engender some interest and some opinions for the council in the future about taking a position. Now, I've spoken with Naomi Spinrad. Who is a leader in Chevy Chase West, who's also been involved with the coalition. And she told me that she would be willing to help. Put the panel together and perhaps be on the panel. So what I would suggest, if, if you, if the council members are agreeable, that we will, we, Matt Schollinger and I will. Formulate a, a panel and, and. And then have the event on a date that. That you all. Meets, meets your schedule sometime, I would say sometime in September. So that's what we wanted to propose to you to. To make a decision on how to move forward.
I think that's a great idea.
Yeah.
Comments, thoughts from the council?
But I mean, the only thing is that I know. Things are still in flux at the county council level on it. And I'm not sure how much will have resolved by September. But I mean, as, as a working session, we can sort of get an update on what the council is at that time. County council, that is, as part of the panel.
The county council is more than likely going to be voting on Thrive 2050 in late September, probably at the earliest.
Yeah.
So the, the point of this. This is what some council members have discussed with me is that they feel it's important that we educate our constituents on this very important topic. So that in the future, if you all decide as a group to take a position. On Thrive 2050, but it's, it's totally up to you. I, I feel that part of our role is to help educate our residents on these very important topics. But this is up, this is up to you. To decide what, how you want to handle it. As I know, you're all welcome, as I've said many times, you're all welcome to have your own opinion and to testify or submit. Emails or anything you want to do. The, the, the question is. In the future, do you ever want to take a joint position as a council?
I, I think this is a great idea. I think we, we do need to bring the town along. I think that. People have different levels of understanding of what's really going on. Don't think people are fully aware of the process, so the earlier we can hold something like this that. Kind of brings everyone onto the same page in terms of what's happening, what's possible, what's at stake. I think that would be great. And I, I frankly. On top of that, would love an opportunity to form. A joint position with my fellow council members. I think that would be important. I think this is an issue. That would be best handled if we can somehow align. On a joint position, and I think we would probably be better placed to do that if we hold this session. And my only concern is that, is there any way to hold it earlier, earlier in September? So we have a few, you know, two, three weeks before the. Montgomery County.
It's up to you, you know, it's up to you.
I would be up for earlier if we, if it, that works for everyone and makes sense. People coming back from the summer break.
Um, well, I was just wondering. Because I am really low on the knowledge about it all. Is there like a FAQ or like, can we send something out that's like cliff notes of, you know, really what this is? Why it's important to us and why it, how it can impact us? And then what we can do about it, like almost bullet points, so it's not a long document. Is there anything out there?
Well, see, there, there is a lot of that, but the point of this. Frankly, hardly anyone. Including me is totally up to speed on this. And the point of the panel would be to be able to, you know, we would record it and we would. You would, it would start with a presentation along the lines of what you're talking about. Because most people don't even know, I would guess that most of our residents and most of the residents throughout. District one on the county council have no understanding or a clue of what this is all about. And so. And so we can send. Lots of material out, of course, but it's better if we spoon feed it to them in a, in a video presentation or a live presentation. Because perhaps in September, we're going to be back in the town hall anyway. That hasn't been decided yet.
Shannon, it's, it's a good idea. And in fact, I had asked Marnie, as you know, a previous council member, Marnie is very on top of what's going on, and asked her if she would be up for. Preparing an objective. She has a very strong view, but an objective FAQ. For the town, but she herself felt like there's, there are a lot of moving parts here.
Well, but there's, there's information available from the, from the planning board on it because.
Yes.
There's, there's. I mean. The first thing is to understand what it, what it is, you know, what it, you know, what, what it is, not what the position of the coalition. You know, the point is that there'd be a panel and the first panelist would be somebody from the government. That would explain what this is, and then there'd be panel members representing different points of view, and then there'd be a Q and A. From the council and then from the audience.
You know, Jeffrey and, and Matt, you had prepared a folder for our orientation. That had very, sort of the very baseline, basic information on Thrive. I don't know if that's been made available to Shannon. That was very useful to me.
Well, I, I think. That what Councilor Roback is talking about is a great idea because it would be, it would be. When, when you have a panel like this. It's better to. Give that information in advance so they can read about it so they can ask intelligent questions. So there, there, so yes, we definitely could, could distribute. The kind of material that you all received at the orientation.
Exactly.
Great idea. That's a great idea.
Yeah, and part of the problem why I'm being very silent at the moment is that. There's disagreement on Thrive Montgomery 2050 between the county executive and the planning board. They, they're not on the same page at the moment. And so it's, there's considerable uncertainty then in the movement of this at, at the moment. It's also, it's a mass, it's, it's a master document, Thrive Montgomery 2050. So it needs separate zoning text amendments passed by the county council in order to implement the. Recommendations of Thrive Montgomery 2050, and there, there are a couple of those zoning text amendments also floating. One, one by hand screamer is probably the closest to. Real. Beyond that. The Thrive Montgomery 2050 breaks into sub-initiatives, and one of the sub-initiatives is called attainable housing. And that's the initiative that is probably going to have most impact on Somerset. And that's a very, very, very short summary.
Well, that's. What you just laid out, why? Why there needs to be a, why there needs to be a, a presentation.
Yeah.
Because, because everything that you said. Almost no citizen of Montgomery County is up to speed on. And, and, and I would guess that most people don't even know what a zoning text amendment is, and that's why the point of it would be to explain. To our residents what it is and, and.
So Mayor Steven and President Circus, should we circle back on proposed dates for this panel? What, what makes sense? Is there a way to do it even a week earlier? The earlier the better would be my view.
I think it would be nice if tonight you decided on some possible dates that you all. Agreed to, and then we can get to work on it.
So I, I'm in favor of this. The current rates proposed make sense. I would just suggest we consider doing it earlier if we can, perhaps even a week earlier.
But I think that's fine. What we're looking for here is consensus, hopefully from the council. On the, the value, the need to hold a public information meeting. I think Kabir has a great idea to. Try and hold a little bit sooner than maybe had been talked about, moving up to early September. And we can ask. The town manager and the mayor to. Explore some options, and then we can discuss it at our August work session, just to firm things up. Okay, I see a thumbs up from Kabir. Thank you. So if, we have a lot of items on our work session. And we're not trying, so trying to solve anything here, we're just trying to move a lot of things along. So if there are no other questions or concerns, I'd like to move on to the next item. Okay, the next item I have is the newcomers' party. And town reopening. So we're looking at trying to consider an event and select a date.
I think Matt, I think Matt has something to propose.
Oh, thank you, Matt.
A date. You're muted, sir.
There we go. So. Phyllis Wiesenfelder, who, who is, has been nominated to chair the, the newcomers' event. She, she had proposed Sunday, September 19th. Or Sunday, September 26th. As dates for the event. We, we do have a budget for the event. And then part of it was then thinking about wrapping. This into kind of a, a grand reopening of the town hall to. To unveil the plaques, the plaque rather, for the outgoing council members and. Finally, kind of show off what the whole town hall renovation project was because. That never happened because of COVID.
To the Sunday, September 19th, work for everyone.
Yes, makes sense.
Right? That was easy. Okay, moving on to the next.
I think Debbie is saying something, but I think she's muted.
Oh.
I just wanted to say that. There's a chance I'm out of pocket that day. Uh, but it depends what time this would be. Okay, I have a.
Early afternoon.
Okay, I really don't know. I have a save the date for. A big event for a friend, so.
I think we usually have that event around, but we do it like in the late afternoon. But of course, it's always been at the pool. This year will be at the town hall, so.
Uh, anyway, I'm available myself, so.
And would we approve members to the newcomers' committee or consider members to the newcomers' committee at the next council meeting?
Well.
Or should we?
Perhaps.
Yeah.
Perhaps. They, they don't have to be on the, they don't have to be on the, no one has to be on the committee to work. Actually, Phyllis was confirmed as the chair some time ago.
Okay.
Anybody can work on, you know, we always find volunteers to work on events, but.
Okay.
So that.
I've recommended.
The name that you've suggested, they can work on, on the, the event. Whether they're on a committee or not, so.
Okay, yeah, I suggested new residents to Jeffrey.
Yeah.
Who came in in 2019, who would, would love to be part of the committee.
Yeah.
Right. I just, this should be an inclusive event and should be a lot of fun. And just hopefully the COVID-19 Delta variant doesn't throw a wrench anymore.
Fingers crossed.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. Next item, shred event. This is in, I believe, an annual event, a public service. That is typically been sponsored by Phyllis. that is typically been sponsored by Phyllis. And it's at no cost to the town. Residents appreciate it. I move that we just move it. My suggestion or recommendation is that we just move it to the consent agenda for the next council meeting.
Sounds good to me.
Okay. I, I just wanted to say one thing. So, you know, sort of technically, it's up to the mayor and the manager about, about events. There's, there's nothing in the code that requires approval, but I like to have the council have a buy-in on everything. But I, and I do want to say that in particular with the shredding event, the reason why we like to have it approved by the councils is because there's one resident who is, has objected to this event. It's, she lives adjacent to the town hall. And by putting it through a process, then she has the opportunity to air her view against it.
Right.
So I just wanted to let you know that.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, so I take the, I interpret the silence here as agreement to put it on the consent agenda, which means that residents will have a chance to talk about it at the next meeting. Right. Okay. Food trucks to discuss and consider recommending town attorney draft language to amend the code to allow, but require a permit. Do we have such language, Matt or Ron?
Not currently. Um, so I think the, this has been kind of a recurring issue that's come up before. And so I think the idea was if it's something that the council then wanted to move forward with, that Ron could then draft some language either to be introduced at an upcoming council meeting or, or to be further considered to work out any nuances at a, a council work session.
Right. One of the thoughts is the difference between a fixed location as in at the pool versus a roaming truck like an ice cream truck. And that, that, whether we want to draw a distinction there.
I think this makes.
Because ice cream trucks should be allowed.
Well, I, I, what I'm asking is what does the council think is, is what it comes down to, but there is a point is there is a distinction. One is roaming around the town. The other is fixed.
Yeah. I was thinking about food trucks that park and serve and the ones that we have allowed in recent months to be at the pool. And I think there's another proposal from the Equity and Inclusion Committee. I have a feeling we will, I would love for this to move forward expeditiously, but I think we will need a working session time with this because there are probably aspects of this that require discussion between all of us, I suspect.
Yeah. I, I think, I think it's something we should, we should talk about.
Yeah.
It's un-American. That's what the ice cream truck's in. But do I want, do I really want food truck parked across the street from my house?
We'll, we'll let the manager life forth. How about that?
Right. Whatever. But I think we need to discuss exactly how we see these food trucks. Is it only at the pool? Is it at the school? Whatever. I don't, you know.
And I have a request as part of the process, Matt. There is a volunteer on the swim team. I think it's Russell Green, who I think you know, who has been organizing the food trucks. And so there's sort of a early experimentation lessons from the food truck of the swim team because there have been different kinds. They've been parked at different locations at the pool. Some people have been happy with one, but unhappy with another. So it might be good to distill those lessons from him for our session.
Well, and one of the things you want to consider is whether you're going to require that there be a permit, which.
I think we should.
Revenue.
I think we should.
So, so what has historically, what has been the fear with allowing food trucks is that it will then be like what happens every lunchtime in front of Mazda Gallery and which happens on L Street at lunchtime where they block all the parking, they create a traffic nuisance and what have you. That's why they're, I presume that's the public policy as to why they are not legal.
Got it. Got it.
So.
So maybe limits on the number of permits, limits on things like that, that would, so we address those concerns. So we need a discussion.
Right.
Okay.
So do we want to ask Ron, I don't know if we even have sufficient information to ask Ron to draft some proposed language? Or do we just want to put it on the, carve out a bigger block of time at our work session next month?
Yep. I'm wondering if we don't want to, one or two of us to get together and kind of brainstorm some of it, make a suggestion, and then we could picket that instead of starting from ground zero, you know, to figure this out.
You know, I, I think that's a great idea, Debbie. It'd be great if we can have some initial ideas that could be provided to Ron so he could have some draft language for us to work from as a baseline at the next work session. Are you one of the volunteers?
Yeah, I'm gonna, I'll, I'll be happy to volunteer, but I need someone to volunteer with me. And I think I can, I'll hit up, um, I'll hit up Russell Green to help too.
Okay.
And I'm happy to make myself available to help however, however I can.
Thank you.
Thank you, Matt.
And you might also start with, I, I don't know what the food truck laws are in the other municipalities around here.
Debbie, I can help you too.
Okay. We'll make a date.
Okay. Thank you, Debbie and Shannon.
Welcome.
Okay. Uh, that moves us on to the next item, stormwater study committee. This is a complex issue. The notes are to discuss recommended code changes and recommending town attorney draft language to amend the code. You know, I know, especially as we've had some of these heavy rainfalls recently. It just, every time we have a rainfall like that, I'm, I'm reminded of the urgency of dealing with stormwater issues in Somerset. But I'm not sure that the recommendations provided by the stormwater study committee are sufficient or appropriate for interim changes to our town code. And I'm just curious if, so I guess for right now, I just hope we get some, some feedback or maybe some discussion with council members on the stormwater study committee recommendations.
I wholeheartedly agree that we should act sooner rather than later for the same reasons you described, Steve. I think that we should keep systematically chipping away at it. I think that the stormwater committee recommendations have given us sort of a, you know, a, a large landscape to work with. And I think against that, I believe Attorney Bolt had proposed some language and then had sort of suggested steps we could take to try and get smarter about the issues. And I think we were in the midst of that homework. Is my understanding. So for example, you know, one of the suggestions that I think we are all probably in agreement with is this pre-construction meeting that is suggested. And so we were wanting to understand the costs associated with holding that. And I think, Matt, you were, you were gathering that information. For example, I think there was a suggestion made to get some feedback from our town engineer who happens to be on the waterboard of a neighboring community. Yes. And to get his reactions on a number of sort of the impact feasibility and enforceability of the purported, proposed ordinance. So I, I would love for us to kind of do that homework and try and get closer and closer to a reasonable, and I believe very strongly we could, a reasonable version of this ordinance, not far from where the stormwater committee has recommended us to go.
Yeah, I, I suggested at one point that we sort of think of it in two parts. One part is the moving to earlier consideration. And the other part is what language do we actually have in our final code? And I think there is a proposal in their language for earlier consideration where I don't know, Ron, you saw this. What they're saying is that after the first meeting, assuming there are no changes with the Montgomery County review of it, then it would be, that what they say is manager clearance of, of the final permit. It could be executive clearance, the final permit with, with the mayor signing off. And that certainly is one model to consider. It would not require the engineer to come back under those circumstances. So certainly the idea of early consideration will help a lot, I think. And moving that first is, is a good thing to do.
Yeah, I think that makes sense.
Can we do, where like we, um, you know, do something where we set up like we don't want to accept any more waivers?
But.
Ron, you, you, you can answer that one.
Yeah, it's, it's a difficult question. So the town can exercise concurrent jurisdiction with respect to the county concerning building regulations. We can impose requirements that are stricter than the county under certain circumstances. With respect to stormwater drainage, if we were to say, for example, that we're not going to accept the county waiver, then we have to have an underlying town requirement that allows us to do so. In other words, we'd have to have our own stormwater drainage requirements. So, you know, a county waiver would eliminate the need for the applicant to conform to county law, but then they'd have to be required to conform to something else at the town level. So we'd have to put some sort of requirements into place. And, you know, if we're going to follow a model similar to the, the counties, you know, the county, one way I like to, to break it down is, you know, there's a difference between treating water and capturing water on site. You know, the, the county is more concerned with you treating water before it reenters the state's waterways because that's a requirement of state law to have a program in place to do that. Then there's, are certain jurisdictions like the town of Chevy Chase that say we want you to capture water on site. The increase in impervious surface coverage is by your new addition is going to result in X new runoff. So that X new runoff, you've got to capture on site. And that's an easy quantifiable thing that you can build into the code. I, I don't think it's possible just to say, for example, we're not going to accept the county waiver, try harder because we, we have to have some substantive requirement in order to enforce. If, if that helps.
Yeah. I don't, can we, are we able, so I guess like if we want to, I mean, I would think that we want to go in a way for stormwater management where we have more control over, you know, the runoffs and, and things like that that are happening with these new builds. And so I guess like for me, what would be the next step that we need to start doing now so that we can effectively put that into place? Because, um, you know, these lots are just getting snapped up more and more and it's going to continue to happen. So what do we have to do now in order to get to the point where we can be like the town of Chevy Chase or Chevy Chase Village?
Shannon, I share your urgency. So Ron actually has prepared a draft ordinance based on a stormwater committee's recommendations. But there are, I think, a series of unanswered questions and related homework we need to do. At least that's my understanding. I don't know what others think before we can, I think, vote on that ordinance and and, uh, uh, you know, getting an opinion from Doug, for instance, pricing out the concurrent review, for instance. I think there were some great suggestions by Robin last time to collapse how we treat impervious surfaces, for instance. And so I, and I think, Steve, you have questions about the definition of rainfall that remains still a fuzzy area. So I think we just need to do that work and keep building on this draft ordinance is my strong feeling. And I might propose if others are up for it, I think Robin and I are now the liaisons to the stormwater committee.
And they're meeting tomorrow evening.
And so, okay, so we can, maybe we take this on and we chip away on these pieces with Ron's help and Matt's help. And maybe with your input, Shannon. And we come back with an improved ordinance for the next working session. If that's amenable to everyone and to you, Robin.
Let me add a little, like, we do need to do more homework, picking up on what Kabir said we do. Um, and one of the things we need to do is talk to CAS Engineering, who do the work for the town of Chevy Chase to understand how they're interpreting county language and how they're using the town of Chevy Chase.
That's right.
So, but the question is whether we do it or whether we tell the stormwater committee to do it is.
Fair enough.
One of the issues.
Yeah.
The other point, Ron, I, I just wanted to draw your attention to the Maryland stormwater manual, uh, which was revised in 2009. Um, and the county code refers to the Maryland manual. In other words, they're guiding, their code is based upon the 2009 revision of the Maryland Stormwater Manual. Um, and they make the reference to the one-year rainfall event, which is defined in the Maryland Stormwater Manual as the 2.6 inches of rain in our, in our area. In Montgomery County. So that's, that's where that number came from for the stormwater committee. But we're not there yet in terms of something tight that we're all agreed on. And that's why we really do need to do more homework.
Yeah. And I'm, I'm sorry, I left out a thought that I was meaning to include in my last summary. So again, the difference between water quality and water retention. So the, you know, the, the state approach and the county approach is to require applicants to implement E S D to the M E P.
Right.
Environmental Site Design to the maximum extent practical. So it's somewhat, you know, wishy washy as CAS Engineering will, will explain, you know, if, if the county's granted a waiver, it's because the county has found that the waiver is still consistent with E S D to the M E P. So my thought there is, it, it's sometimes better to have exact substantive criteria. You know, if, if you're adding X square feet of new impervious coverage, capture Y feet of cubic, cubic volume of runoff.
Right. And I, I agree. And I think we should also be, what people talk about in town is not pollution. What they talk about is flooded basements. Um, and, and so it is about flooding our, and that's how our code should be based. That's what a code should be based on, not pollution, which is really what is driving the county code.
So in Steve, what's your, and, and Debbie and Shannon, what, and, and Robin, what are your thoughts on proposed process of Robin and I taking this with the stormwater committee and, and, and coming up with the, you know, a version, building on Ron's version for us to discuss at the next working session? Because we, I would hope we would be there today, to be honest with you, but I, it would be great to get there sooner. Uh, and if it's, it's one more month, I think that's doable. I'm willing to put the time in to make it happen.
Yeah. Um, I mean, it's certainly, it should be discussion at tomorrow evening and hopefully we can get, get them.
Some progress there. Okay. Okay.
I, I think we should, it'd be great if we could have some recommended or proposed changes or updates to the, the language that Ron has drafted for us to discuss at greater length at the next work session. So that if we come to uh, some measure of concurrence within the council, we could bring it to the, I guess it would be the council meeting in the first Monday in September.
Yeah. Agreed. Agreed. So let's, we'll target that. We will target that. We will push on that.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Um, okay. Next items are town pool. To, um, first item authorized town manager to solicit for a pool management contract. Uh, interest, this may have been heightened a bit by issues or concerns with regards to the, um, the, the pump issue with the pool. But this is actually a, a bigger issue or a longer standing issue than that. But this is actually a bigger issue or a longer standing issue than that. I don't know, Matt, if you have any comments? If not, I can move on.
By the way, before Matt says anything, I just want all of you to know that Matt was phenomenal last week, phenomenal.
Yes.
Phenomenal job, and I emphasize it enough, so. I think, yeah.
Thanks. Thanks for saying that. I don't I don't really have a whole lot to add. I think I think Steve's right on the money. I think even beyond whether or not to select a new contractor, I think there are certain provisions within our contract that need updating anyway. So I I think it it makes sense and it makes sense to do it now so that we can select somebody in the fall when these companies do most of their hiring for the following season.
Matt, do we have a a sense of how many pool management companies are out there that we haven't fired already?
I I I think there's about four. I can, I I think I can name them. I think it's American Pool, Continental, Premier and
Georgetown.
Georgetown. Georgetown, yeah, Georgetown.
Georgetown.
Any of those, any of those are past providers?
Georgetown.
Georgetown?
Yeah, and I think, I forget what the the folks that serve us now used to be something else before.
They used to be Community Pool.
And then American Pool acquired.
Remember, everyone, one option you might consider is self-management.
Thank you. Thank you for the great suggestion, Jeffrey. I think people, people are quickly leaving the meeting.
You know, the mayor at the pool every day, right? That's be be a responsibility of the mayor.
Mayor gets the, you know, the pool view office.
Maybe for that big contract, I'll do it.
You you know, I have to say, being probably, I don't know, Robin, maybe you've lived in the town as long as I have. But we did go through pool management companies early on. And I think this is a very hard job. I think it's hard to find the right company. So you know, I would be real careful in how we do this.
Yeah, well, right. I mean, his question is, are there failings that you're going to trip it to American Pool staff that you think another contractor would do a better job of? Or is it just a difficult job and even reasonable staff would have had problems?
Right.
Right. But but just to clarify, this is not a discussion about selecting a replacement for American Pool. This is just
The RFP.
Do we want Matt to start the process?
He absolutely should start.
Yeah.
I agree. Start the process.
Okay, so we're in agreement. Thank you. The next item, I think, is is really important. There's something that the council has like briefly discussed, but never really dug into over the last couple of years that I've been on the council. And that's pedestrian risks with the current parking lot layout. The way the sidewalk sort of feeds into the parking lot, the way the parking lot lines are set up. I don't know the solution. But I think there is clearly an issue, and I guess the topic here is, does the council think there's an issue? And if there is.
There's.
Are you talking about at the pool?
At the pool.
You didn't make that clear. I didn't know what you were talking about.
Yeah, oh, sorry, at the pool, the walkway at the pool.
Let 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 me say something. I used to be on a committee at the Transportation Research Board on older driver safety. It's actually older people's safety. And I'm certainly sensitive to how slowly some older people walk. And right now, a a an older person walking slowly is exposed for a very long time on that pedestrian walkway. Now, cars are hopefully going slowly, and and we haven't seen an accident yet. But that is a lot of exposure, and the same is true for two-year-olds walking there and three-year-olds walking there. So shortening the distance they have to cross the parking lot makes a lot of sense for that reason.
Well, the question is whether you want to hire a a professional to come up with a
A plan?
Solution. It's not, it's not, you know, you you need to get, you need to decide whether you want to, and and I don't think there's anything in this year's budget for that necessarily, is there?
Exactly.
So so that's something you want to, you you might want to talk about a budget decision, or if you think it's an emergency, then you can decide that it needs to be done now and that that you, the manager would identify where the funds would come from.
Debbie, is there a short-term fix from the pool committee?
I don't think so. You know, the pool committee has discussed this over the years. And not that long ago, we we did ask for a change.
But the pool committee are engineers, so.
No, no, I I know, I know, but but you know, it's it's just sort of more hot put to it. That's all I'm trying to.
You know, there there. I'm not an engineer, but there is a pathway to do this. And I think why it got shot down the last time was that nobody wanted to 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 disrupt the 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 greenery we have there, because you'd have to move some greenery. But there is a way to do this, to make this safer. I don't know that we need a big professional opinion here, or maybe we do. I don't know. I'd have to leave that to Matt, to be honest.
I think we need a professional.
Yeah, you have to, yeah.
Just keep in mind that there are just very natural constraints there. It's a very tight space. So you you may get a professionally endorsed view of this, effectively what Debbie has just said. But I tend to agree that a professional would probably be the prudent way to move forward. I just think there are natural constraints, and we're probably not going to come up with too many alternatives.
One of the things we could do is shrink the parking lot by the space that we take away from the greenery so that there's equal greenery at the end of it.
That's right. And I I think, I think yeah, do we have a sense of how much a professional would cost? What is this professional? Who is this professional that specializes in parking lot redesign?
Tonight, you could ask the town manager to come back with some proposals.
Shannon, what were you gonna say?
Well.
That's what I was hoping for.
You know, in the, I mean, I don't know, like, in the short term, you know, if we think that it's a big problem, which, you know, I think that there's all SUVs. And like, you're asking these SUVs to back up right by that walkway, and there's little kids everywhere. But, you know, I mean, for a short-term town fix, like, we could just take those parking spots away from the pool. I don't know if that would help, but it's only three spots, I think, right? And we could recommend that we just don't have the people park there, at least right now, as we're trying to figure it out. Or I'm not sure, but I mean, I'm sure that leads into other issues than where people have to park on Fallstone or they have to park on Warwick, or maybe have, unforbid, more people walk. But, you know, the times that the pool is that full doesn't seem to be that many times, especially as the swimming season is over, and maybe we can just take away those and for the short term. Yeah.
I don't know that I would do that, Shannon. I um I I think we could, you know, ask people to back into their spots. You know, try to have a little campaign, people back into a spot, so you don't, you know, mow anybody down on the way out, you know.
I I think it's hard, because like, back into that spot, like, you have to, it's so tight, like.
Tight, yep.
You could back into them on the way in. Like, I could never back into that spot.
Listening to this has made me convinced that we need a professional, because there is, there are spots on the other side as well.
So wait a minute.
Yeah.
Let me, let me add, before you keep talking about this, what, by what authority, Mr. Town Attorney, can can the town manager make any decisions about this? I mean, what, you know, what's the authority to make any of these changes?
Well, it would require approval for the expenditure to hire the professional. The budget may need to be amended for that purpose. If the budget does require amendment, because it's a reappropriation that has to be.
I think I already talked about that. I'm saying that, let's say the council wanted, somebody wanted to take away these spaces. Does the council have to vote on that, or can the town manager or the mayor make that decision? What's the authority for that?
Well, my unresearched opinion would be that would require council approval for alteration of the park.
That's what I thought.
Okay, so Steve, we asked Matt to come back with a proposal on cost and, okay.
So so what I'm hearing here is general concurrence, that there's an issue. And there's uncertainty or a variety of opinions or ideas and how we can address it. And I I recommend that we ask the town manager to come back with to to with a proposal on some professional subject matter expertise to address the situation. So we do it right.
Yeah, approving improvements is a council power.
Right.
I'm sorry, under the.
And and I I would ask for this, Mr. Manager, by the the next working session.
So just to be clear, you would like me to individually solicit bids or proposals from various engineering firms or anybody else and bring you, bring you back a selection of proposals to consider and whether it's worth moving ahead.
The 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 cost may be modest enough that we don't need to do a formal competitive solicitation. You may be, may be able to just use your your list of contacts to identify a good provider.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, I would, I would ask for two options when you do it. One is the the redesign path. The other is shrinking the parking lot to compensate for the greenery lost to the path.
Right.
Or a path that reserves greenery.
In in addition, in addition to this, I I do think that you're going to need to have a list of what are the problems that people are having, like all the different problems. Because I I'm not sure that you get how adequate the feedback is from a broad range of people. I I've heard over the years, these couple of things, but maybe there are more problems that need to be identified so that the, an engineer that you might hire could address them.
Matt, as you explore that, an added dimension here is the food trucks, actually. And so if we are to hire an expert for redesign, we might want to incorporate sort of, because right now, it's sort of been all over the map, I think, where the food trucks have been located. So it might be worth thinking through that.
That's a great point. And my other thought here is this is important. But I think it's it's equally important to take a a thoughtful, measured approach as opposed to just some ad hoc suggestions. We all have some ideas on what we could do to make things better. But I think it's it's possible that any of those suggestions could actually make things worse. So I I would recommend postponing taking actions until we get some advice from an expert. And.
Fair, makes sense.
Yeah.
Okay, great. Thank you. Town committees to discuss protocols for committees and how recommendations from town committees to council should be structured.
So the the, I'm not sure if Matt circulated the working document, did you?
I include, excuse me, I included a kind of, yeah, a working draft of that kind of goes over.
The one that we've been using.
The formation of committees, committee meetings, and then actions for committees.
So, Mr. President, the purpose of that item tonight is to whether the council wants to move this forward to put on the agenda. And and if anything, and and if anything needs to be added before it and and also, I don't know whether and for this is for the town attorney, whether this is something that needs to be reviewed by the town attorney. I I don't know, but.
What, what do you have in mind at the moment? I mean, what's driving this?
Well, what's driving this is so that the, to improve the the effectiveness and the functioning of the committees. And to and to make this policy so that everybody understands.
But couldn't we, as council, recommend to you, Jeffrey, as mayor, that that you develop protocols as you see fit for committees, which you, which you nominate members to, which we approve?
No, no, we did, we did develop the protocols.
But do, does it need a council? You know, it can be a fluid set of protocols that you can make sure it's propagated across committees. Or Matt can, and doesn't necessarily require a council.
We're, no, we're asking, we're asking the council to approve the document in the future.
I see. And why? Why do you need?
So that there will be a guideline on how, in the future, committees will function and how recommendation, what will be the process to bring recommendations to the council? Right now, it's just like we didn't have a process for legislation. We don't really have a defined process for how committees will bring recommendations formally to the council.
The document, the document you, Jeffrey, we're talking about the the committee protocol draft? Is that what we're talking about? I would, I would think we would need to discuss it if we're going to formalize it.
Yes. I mean, is is this just one aspect of a larger committee protocol, or is it a standing item on its own?
Yeah, this, thi- this is the, this is the constitution for the for the committees that can be amended. You know, once it's passed, then it could be amended in the future.
All right. I mean, so a council needs to approve the constitution for committees, as you're calling it. And part of the constitution for committees should be how a committee brings a recommendation to council.
Because I think that's in, that's in the document, isn't it?
All right, so when are we taking that to council for approval?
Well, well, that's why, that's why we, I asked that it be put on this agenda, whether it's ready to go to the council or whether it needs more work. It it, you know, it it could be that you you read the document and then at the August work session, you you add things and then it can be approved in September.
Okay.
But I want to make sure that, I want to make sure that, as I discussed with the president, I want to make sure that the council had as much input as possible into this document.
All right, so let, I mean, let's then say the committee protocols will be on the work group agenda for the August meeting, and you'll share, Matt, you'll share what we have with the council as soon as possible, so we can review it. All right, okay.
Yeah, that sounds good. Thank you, Robin.
Is is what we have, is is that what, will we be working off the draft that you have already? You're going to be working to change that, so.
I I'll, I'll, I'll update it this week, and I'll, I'll send you all an updated copy by the end of this week to consult.
Thank you, Matt.
Yeah, I had one, one suggestion, Matt, on, under actions, the fourth bullet, which is all expenditures and and policy proposals, you know, maybe, maybe we want to say tasks or, you know, issues of study, because I think that's where, you know, some concern was raised in the past. If if a committee is serving as an advisory committee to the council, then the council should probably approve. the council should probably approve in advance what tasks they're undertaking so that there's no so that everyone's on the same page and so that the committee isn't doing work that the council might not want to take up. And then the committee members might have hard feelings or so on.
Let me just give one example of why I I think it's obvious this is necessary. Last year, several committees wanted to do their own surveys and some council members objected to that. And I I personally feel that committees should have the ability to do whatever surveys they want. But there was no authority for me. There was no authority for anybody until the council said that they wanted to approve the survey. So this way would clarify any gray area. For example, when a committee makes a recommendation right now, sometimes the sometimes the chair sends it to all of you. Sometimes they, I I, you know, there's, there's no, it's like there's no rules and procedures for that. And and it doesn't make any sense to not have that, you know. When a committee makes a recommendation, it should go to the town manager, which are the council presidents, and then can decide whether to when to put it on the work session agenda, not to give it to all of you directly. For example, because it's not efficient. Right now, there's a lack of efficiency. For example.
Right. So I think it's a good idea to try to formalize the process or standardize the process. And and in some ways, I think this will strengthen the role of the committees in enabling them or helping them understand how the recommendations can be brought to the council. So I'm really excited about this. And I guess at this point, we'll we'll look for a few updates or tweaks based on this discussion and inputs from the town attorney from the manager, and we'll discuss it at the next work session.
And another area which is really important is that it strengthens the idea that our town manager is our public information officer. And so that no committee chair or member should be publicizing things without it being going through the town manager. So sometimes committee chairs put information on different social media or the Sarah Morris listserv. And and sometimes they're not, it's not accurate. And so this way, it all goes through one public information officer to make sure that it's kosher.
I appreciate the spirit of that idea. But admittedly, I feel practically that's going to create a lot of challenges and bottlenecks. So it would be good to discuss this.
It's going to create efficiencies instead of extra emails.
As long as the committees are acting in keeping with their roles, I think we want to give them as much flexibility and strengthen their role.
I mean, are are we writing a code for committees? Or what what is the state? What is this document going to be?
But let's pick this up at the next working section, I think. I think we need an updated draft that we can dig into the next working session, if I may suggest that.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. But that's a great question, Robin, and I'm not I'm not quite sure of the answer. It might just be part of the way we charter our committees. Or it could be in the town code.
Yeah, one way I think of it is is like committee SOPs. And we.
And operating procedure. Yep. Okay, a great discussion. Next item, town hall, discuss process of reopening the town hall. Do we just jump in and say reopen it with the opening on September 19th? And then after September 19th, it is fully open for all purposes? Would we have some sort of standard approach where maybe we would hold the our council meeting in September at the town hall? And start to anyhow. So so that's the discussion or that's the topic. Thoughts, folks?
Yeah, I brought this up because, I mean, when are we ever going to go back to the town halls? Kind of on me just now. And what what do we use as a cue to go back there? I I think that we are in good control of COVID in our region right now. I think there's there is very little evidence of new infections in our own local areas. Has been very little evidence of it for some months now. And so we are in quite a safe position for opening that in interior space. But the Delta variant is still around. And so do we move it, open it gradually and keep an eye on things? Or do we open it all at once and just let it happen? That's right.
I think we might think about opening it carefully because I think Robin's right. We're in a really good place here in terms of in terms of infection, but things are changing. Things are changing all over the place in terms of the the variant. It's really hitting some communities hard. You know, LA is is back to masking. You know, so we might just maybe take a few little steps.
I mean, I think that I agree with you, Debbie, that, you know, I have several friends from the West Coast. I know it's all anecdotal, but they got the Delta variant and they're vaccinated. And, you know, with kids in school, starting back up in September, it's going to be a big issue. Especially for those of us who have unvaccinated kids. And so like, I don't know what the rules would be in terms of like the town hall because for me and my standpoint, like, I wouldn't want people to go if they weren't vaccinated there. And, you know, I just think that I think that it's if we can, if we want more people involved, it, you know, I don't know if we should ask their opinions. I'm not really sure, but I'm definitely not like rushing to go sit inside places for hours on end in in close spaces personally. And I'm vaccinated.
I wonder if if we are allowed or even want to entertain the you have to be vaccinated to come in. You know, at my synagogue, you got to be vaccinated to come in. And I'm really good with that.
I'm vaccinated too, and I'm I think all of that makes sense. I think I have a slightly different perspective here, which is that we have been able to do our work via Zoom effectively. And the advantage of being on Zoom is that town residents are in a position to participate in council meetings that I think is makes it particularly harder if we are meeting in person at the town hall. And I think, Robin, you switched me on to this when you had brought it up at one point. I think there's something to be said about that. I think you were forced into this situation, but it might actually be.
Matt has been working on that in terms of developing live streaming or or filming of our town council meetings so that it's there. What is the status of that, Matt?
Um, I actually have a meeting with MMC this week, so I should have I should have an update on that.
But that's that will allow residents to.
For the benefit of Councilmember Roback, MMC is Montgomery Municipal Channel, which is a channel that is owned by all the municipalities except Rockville, Gavisburg, Tacoma, who have their own. And they have they have capital funds that they they can outfit our town hall with the proper equipment to televise the meetings. Just and I'm not even sure if we discussed that in orientation.
No.
Just to clarify, televised is different than what can happen now by Zoom, by someone raising a hand. And I think that's that's an important distinction. I think we want engagement. I think we, you know, if we can create a platform for engagement and be able to carry a work on, that would be my strong preference.
I agree. I I think this is a potentially very turbulent time in terms of COVID-19. And I for one, I'm not ready to recommend any changes, but I think maybe this should be a topic for us to revisit at the August work session.
Well, I think you so I think that you have only voted to close the town hall till the end of July. So you will need to agendize closing the town hall until the end of August. Is that correct, Mr. Town Manager?
I believe we did through the end of August. So we're we we are kind of caught up, but if we wanted to extend it. So in September, we did Zoom, I think, at that point, we would have to.
Yeah, I would recommend that you make that decision at the August meeting.
Yeah, we should put it on.
Absolutely.
Everybody come play there there September.
That's good timing. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Okay. The American Rescue Plan, our status of funds. I don't know if Robin from the Budget Committee or Matt can provide some the latest updates.
And he can pass it on.
Sure. So we still have not received our actual funds. Originally, we were supposed to receive them by July 15th. On July 16th, the the Department of Treasury updated their guidance to include operating and capital funds. So I think that that threw off the the final numbers a little bit that didn't affect Somerset at all. So I I did get confirmation today that we're receiving our full allocation a little over one and a quarter million dollars. So this will this will be split into two halves. The first first half is going to be dispersed in the coming weeks and the second a a year later. I went ahead and created a new Maryland Local Government Investment Pool account for us. And so that's that's an account that we already had for as as a de facto savings account, basically, for the town. So I I went ahead and created another account through them for us because although it's negligible, it it is really about the best savings rates that are available to us sadly, which is I think point zero five percent, something something awful like that.
Deeply interest. Just isn't that exciting?
In the stock market, everybody.
Right. So but in any case, I think it it serves kind of a dual purpose of also being able to track it easily. And that was one of the recommendations that the National League of Cities had for us and MNL had for us is to kind of set up a separate account so you can easily track it. In addition, for budgeting purposes, it is easier because you even of money we don't spend, we do get to keep any interest that's that's earned. Again, probably pretty minimal. But so I think I outlined in kind of the 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 brief letter to you all, kind of the different purposes. I think the two that are most relevant to us are are probably going to be A, making up for lost revenue and B, the sewer infrastructure investments, which as the guidance continued to come out, we 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 learned that stormwater improvements, generally speaking, will be covered under that provision. And so that's kind of where we are at the moment.
Matt, can I play back what I heard? You're saying we are going to receive the first tranche any day now?
Yes, that's that's right. Yeah.
Any day now before the end of the month is your expectation. And the second part of this is the use of what are we going to use it for? And at our last discussion, I think, Robin, you had intimated that we might consider half of it plugging the budget poll from last year.
It was very approximate.
It was approximate. And the other half is where we need new ideas. One category of ideas is stormwater, but there could be other ideas. And I think you had said, think about these other ideas, right?
Just a little bit on the rules. The money that's catching up on budget losses is very general. We can use it for anything that we'd have used our budget for. The money on stormwater can be used for any stormwater purpose. It does not have to be connected to COVID. But other uses have to be connected to COVID losses.
Got it. Got it.
So let me ask the town attorney to clarify, how does this work in relation to the already passed budget?
You just muted yourself.
You muted yourself.
Oh, I did the opposite, I meant intended. I don't believe the budget needs to be amended because this is not tax revenue that requires appropriation under state law. But under the ARPA program, you do have to earmark it by 2024. So I think it would be a good idea to amend the budget for that purpose, to earmark the funds, to dedicate the funds.
So what?
That would be done by council motion.
So what? So what process do you suggest for the council?
Well, amend amend the budget by council motion. And with respect to dedicating the funds, we you do have to be careful that they are eligible expenses under ARPA. And so you know, I would suggest that you have that confirmation lined up with, you know, legal opinion or confirmation from the Treasury.
Well, perhaps we perhaps, Mr. President, we should schedule some kind of special budget work session in in a future month so that so that the same way we do, this is this is like a huge amount of money that needs serious input from all five of you.
Well, the other thing is that we want to call the town forum supposed to get input from residents as well.
Right, right. You want residents. So so perhaps at our at our next leadership meeting, we will the three of us will come up with a proposal for that process to be discussed at the August work session. How does that sound?
Sure, that's fine.
That's good. Because we need to move ahead.
Well, right. I mean, the the we the we've got to have the funds allocated by December 31st, 2024. So we have a little bit of time. But as was pointed out today in one of the sessions that I watched, some projects, like some infrastructure projects, take quite a while to get going. So you have to think about them early.
Your plan sounds good to me.
And that goes into capital. And those things, we go into capital budget too.
Yeah, well, I mean, this money can be capitalized or operating. It's flexible.
I might point, just quickly point out one recommendation in some of in some of the calls has been to consider hiring, so using some of the funds to hire somebody to help administer those funds and administer the programs that would be eligible under those funds and possibly even looking at some kind of rider program with some of our neighboring municipalities that might be looking at similar projects.
And Matt, how good are you at federal acquisition regulations? Because that's we're supposed to use those regulations for this money. Are you to know them is what it comes down to.
Oh, I'm I'm sorry. Well, yeah, I think that that's that was part of the point of the recommendations is that the there there is a sort of specialized expertise when it comes to the federal acquisition rules and some of the other you know, rules and regulations that are tied to a lot of this money.
Yeah. And Matt, do you know, I had I heard yesterday, but I haven't had time to look into it yet, that the Maryland Municipal League reported that the state. The Maryland Municipal League reported that the state has hired. An entity to help. Members of M M L determine eligible uses, sort of a, you know, a. Independent contractor slash consultant.
I I believe that's right, um, I I think it's a Hagerty Consulting, I think is. Is the people that are.
Oh, good. And they there's there's, they are supposedly organizing a second webinar that is either late this month or in August, that is going to be on eligible uses, so.
I I think that's right, Hagerty Consulting.
You're gonna have a lot of extra work this year.
Yeah, I mean, yes, I've I've been going back and forth with Phil, and he should really present to the council. They where where what the Budget Committee knows already, and so.
Yeah.
Should do that.
Yeah, I'm sure about this, Rob and I have had a a separate conversation about. That the town's budget and revenue drops. And Rob made it clear to me that the revenue drops to the town. Are not apparently directly related to COVID is.
That is. Yeah, which the that 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 doesn't mean that we can't use the money, um, because of the revenue, we can use the money because our revenue dropped. Because there is no requirement that that has to be related to COVID.
Okay.
But. The issue is whether the revenue drop is um, going to be recurring, in other words, if 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 we've gone off a cliff and we're going to stay down. And the likely hypothesis is that we are going to stay down. Um, it isn't definite, um, but the likely hypothesis is we are going to stay down. Which means we shouldn't necessarily use it to shore up our operating budget, because our operating budget is going to still be down when this money disappears.
Right. Okay, um, this might be more for the the mayor or for Ron, but. Do we have? Do we ask the Budget Committee to give us? An update at our next work session? I mean, normally, we just talk amongst ourselves, but. Can we bring in a committee like that?
Well, well, that's what we're going to talk about next week.
Okay, good.
Process, what the process will be.
Good, thank you.
And and with respect to the reduction of of revenue. Now, I haven't looked into this issue, I've I've looked into stormwater infrastructure for other clients. But with respect to reduction of revenue, I I believe you have to prove that the reduction was caused by COVID.
No.
Replenish.
No, uh, I I mean, look it up, again, I mean. Both Phil Young and I have searched the the Treasury document and and know it's just a reduction in revenue, it is not a reduction in revenue tied to COVID, it's policy.
Well, the the law says for the provision of government services to the extent of the reduction in revenue of such. City. Due to COVID nineteen.
Uh, I think if you see further down in the section which covers this general loss, no such restrictive language, but I I mean. If it is restrictive, then we can't use it at all for that purpose, um, but we should check that.
Or don't want to concede that it's not directly.
We may want to take this discussion off the session, but I think.
Now, it is not directly related to COVID, it occurred in two thousand eighteen. On the evidence is quite clear.
Well, I think we should have a discussion on this evidence independently, and we may want to do it in the Budget Committee. Because I think it's important to establish a clear understanding of what's driving revenue shortfall, I've heard different theories. But I do think that we should probably not have this discussion here, and I think. It would be great to hear from the leadership group after next week on the best way forward.
Okay. Great, than thank you, Kavir. Yeah, I think we need to carve out more time at next month's work session to really dig into. Budget and understanding. Uh, cash flow, resources, expenditures, and opportunities with the American Rescue Plan.
Yep.
Okay, uh, thank you, next item is streetlights. Just a list from Pepco regarding installation of LED streetlights, there are some. Issues there.
Yeah. Um, the Public Service Commission denied Pepco's proposal to install LED streetlights across its community. Um, and that decision arose at the end of June, um. I've been in touch with Tammy Watkins and Pepco is still, um. Struggling. In terms of understanding the implications of that and where to go forward at the moment, they've not really got a plan. Uh, the. Details of that, the the Public Service Commission said, we've got nothing against LED lights, we think they should be installed, what we. Object to is the details of the proposal, and it's something that comes down to some of our fellow, um. Communities, including the town of Chevy Chase. Complained to the Public Service Commission that they had spent money on streetlights, um. And they were just gonna. Lose those streetlights to the LED lights and then pay increased rates for these LED installations when they had already invested in money for for new streetlights. Um, and that that, um. The Public Service Commission heard. So what they recommend is that Pepco comes back to them with a new proposal that allows more choice from their customers in terms of the installation of the LED lights. And that's where it is.
And what does, what is the implication of the timeline here, uh, Robin, when will they come back?
Scheduled to get LED lights now.
No, 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 that I understood, but I mean, wh- what does it mean? When does Pepco go back to P S C in your understanding?
They do, as I said, they are, they are still scratching their heads, trying to figure out what to do.
So it could be another year before they go back.
Be another year.
Okay.
Um, I I have reached out to Tammy Watkins or as representatives saying, you know. We could partner with you in some way, somehow, you know, just opening up a way, saying, we, you know, we we're interested in LED lights, it's kind of message, so. We're willing to work with you any way you want, so that that's that's where we are right now.
Program would still be available if if you're interested.
Say that, say that again, Ron?
The the Pepco kayak program, so, you know, construction and aid of and, you know, construction in lieu of. Oh, shoot.
That's 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 in the, um.
You can, you can buy the lights. And have Pepco install them and.
So so related to that, let me point out, this is something that we really didn't. To necessarily talk about during orientation, but, um. In in the past. Before this proposal was before the Public Service Commission. The council had discussed the possibility of. Over a number of. Uh. And over a number of years, putting in the budget, the installation of these lights. So that's something that could be considered again. You know, do one street a year for. Twenty year, I don't know, but anyway, I just want to throw that out.
Jeffrey, do we have a full cost estimate of replacing all our streetlights to LED, given that we've been at this issue for twenty years?
I. I mean.
I don't know if we have an updated one.
Give you a little bit of history quickly, um. When we were trying to do this, this was before Pepco's proposal went to P S C and. We said we want to buy our streetlights, and they said, oh, well, we we charge you for installation of them. And last, we heard they've gone up to two thousand five hundred per light to install them.
Right.
Now, it turns out the reason they were doing that was they were blocking us from installing them because they were about to put a proposal in where they would have LED lights. Through their whole community, and they figured, you know, there's no point in you doing that, that's why they were, they were blocking us. Things have changed, but at the moment, as I said, they are completely, um. Confused, and so I will follow up again with Tammy to see wh- whether we can do anything with them. Um, as they get their head together.
Ron, wha- what the kayak program, how does that work exactly?
Yeah, as Robin explained it, so Chevy Chase View. Did so. Um, and as Robin noted, they contested the P S E rate case. For the reasons Robin noted, they're my client, I put in their opposition for them.
Well, okay.
So they. You know, they gave Pepco a lump of, a lump sum of money in order for Pepco to acquire the lights that Chevy Chase View wanted. And Pepco installed them for them, and then, you know, charges a a maintenance fee to maintain them. And uh, replace them as needed.
I see, and and it was in in consistent with the cost figure Robin just mentioned?
And I think it was earlier, so they didn't.
Well, it was a.
I see, I see.
And not LED lights.
Sixteen years ago. Well, proposed to eliminate the kayak program in the new rate case, but as the rate case has not. Been approved, they may still be willing to. To work with you in that regard.
And one other, one other just quick piece of background. Uh, Kavir, that sort of, I think, uh, addresses your question. Part of the. Part of the confusion in the past with getting a a a a. A cost from Pepco is that they had. They had estimated, you know, or proposed to the town of Somerset. This exorbitantly high twenty five hundred dollars per fixture quote. Which was ten times as much as Tacoma Park had done, when Tacoma Park had done a pilot LED program. And I think that's where Somerset had had a lot of difficulty in getting an an agreement with Pepco, because it felt like. We weren't getting a fair proposal for many years, and as Robin said. May very well be because they had this coming down the pike.
Is there, thank you, Matt and Ron, and Robin, is there a way for us to? Develop a clear sense of the costs and the process under the kayak program? How would we go about doing that?
That, I mean, you can certainly look at the cost of LED bulbs, and they're not very expensive. Uh, the major cost is installation of the bulbs, and for that, you need an estimate from Pepco. We could pose to Pepco that we had independent contractor install them, but I don't know if they would buy that.
Well, I just, I don't, I am, I don't know if if Steve and Shannon and Debbie. Can put their minds around this, but I would love to see in writing sort of. How we go about administering this under a co- under the kayak program? What are the full costs involved? What is the process? How long would it take? I just don't have that in front of me, I I'm able, I can educate myself, if that's the way we move forward, or if it's useful for the whole council, I don't know if Matt and Ron.
Yeah, well, if we can, yeah. Majority, that's the purpose of the work session, for if the majority of you. Want to charge Matt with that, that's, that's, that's good.
Let's make a concrete step forward here, let's do that.
And can I also add, you also have the ability under state law. To compel Pepco to sell you the lights so that you maintain them yourselves.
Well, you know, that that sounds even more attractive, Ron, so I think it would be, it would be great to have our best cost effective within law process.
Yeah.
To go about doing this.
It's, I mean, the kayak program, what I, what I don't know, um, is. Under the Pepco proposal, when they installed LED lights, they were going to be under a computer system so that. Um, if a light goes out, Pepco would know instantly, because the light is communicating to Pepco without the light is out. Um, which makes it much more efficient in terms of replacing lights, um, at the moment, they have to have a resident call it in.
I see.
Um, and and I don't know whether under the kayak program that that would stand, so again, some, going back to 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 Pepco to find out. What their thinking is, I think, needs to be part of this as well.
So, Robin, do, should we request that Matt and Ron come back to us with a? Proposal on how we could pursue this under the kayak program? Would that be sensible to?
Yeah, I mean, I I would suggest maybe first a quick call to Tammy Watkins and and ask, is it even still available, is it on the table?
Right.
Matt, are you are able to do that?
That's fine, and actually Tammy, uh, sent me a message today that said, um. Please let me know how or if the town of Somerset would like to proceed with streetlight conversion.
There you go.
So.
Let's put definition around it, cost, timing, process, what do we need to do? What are the legal steps? I think that would be great. I have to say that there are few things, very few things in our town that make. You know, are the true interface between the town government and the residents, and streetlights is at the top of that list. I think if they are not functioning, people assume we are not functioning. So I think we must fix them, and we must do them, and if we want to do LEDs, let's do it. Let's cost it out, let's take those steps.
Yeah, well said. So what is the next step to move this ahead, though?
Well, I think, uh, given that Tammy has reached out to Matt, um. Matt asks Tammy if the kayak program is ongoing, asks whether under the kayak program, the LED lights will have that self communicating feature back to to Pepco. And that information.
And let's, and and what I would go further, Steve and Robin, if Matt and Ron are up for it, is just to give us. A V forward, total cost, process, what do we need to do? Give us a sort of a developed approach forward that we can look at at our next working session. If 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 doable in the next few weeks.
Right, Robin, which is the committee that's focused most on lights, was the Environment Committee? Yeah. So can 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 we reengage the Environment Committee on this topic?
Uh, we certainly can, yeah.
Okay. Right. Um. I think we've now gone through all of the. Primary topics. Well, it's only eight forty two, there's one small topic.
The uh, the Equity and Inclusion Committees, International Food Trucks and Pickleball, that's the two others.
Oh, I missed that, I missed that, sorry, I was looking at a different list. Thank you very much, Robin. So, uh, where are we on pickleball?
Okay, so remember what we decided is that, um. Matt and I would present, I don't know what he, what he said to council, but the uh, the idea is that. The council would approve a pickleball exhibition and. I would say you want to do it. Uh, no, earlier than September, when people are away, there is, there is a pickleball professional. Hold on, I got the information today. His name is Dave Robinson, he's willing to do a two hour pickleball demo on the Somerset basketball court for two hundred dollars. He'll bring, put down and remove temporary lines and nets. And, uh, he also has a bunch of paddles, residents can barter in the demo. And, uh, so. I, so I would propose that you put this on the agenda for, um. August to approve with a date and also. To expend two hundred dollars to pay this gentleman and maybe have some funds for refreshments.
Jeffrey and Steve, you're not approving the use of the funds because they are negligible, right? I think we are approving the use of town land.
I. No, I'm suggesting that it be on the agenda in. August.
To approve the funds?
Yes.
To approve the, to approve the demonstration. And the funds and and the date.
Okay.
And that's why we said we would bring it to this meeting for you to decide if you, if that's. If you're agreeable to moving it forward that way.
Mr. Mayor, do do we have the authority to? Use the basketball courts? I thought it's sort of. Has to be kept free and open for the county.
No, it's. It belongs to the. The. Belong to the town.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, ultimately, it's can we make reservations on the court, because that's what's gonna, it's gonna come to and.
It's up to, it's up to, it's up to the council to decide. Is that correct, Mr. Tenetra? The council can approve the use of the basketball court for an exhibition, that's why. I suggest it be on the agenda.
Yes, that's right, Mr. Mayor.
All right. Great, than thank you both very much. So, so we'll consider that at the. August council meeting. The next council meeting to vote on it. And as a non consent item. Um, do we need to do any discussion of scheduling now, or can we just leave that up to the manager?
Well, what's the? That you all recommend?
We need to approve it, first of all, obviously, at the August meeting, and then presumably, if Matt follows through on it, as he does on so many things.
You could put, you could put a proposed date. It's actually the item, so. It, does anyone have input? It's actually the item. So, i- does anyone have input particularly on when they think it? Might be a weekend, I guess, obviously a weekend, right?
Get a September weekend when the weather may not be ninety-five degrees and humid, you know.
Yeah, maybe like, like mid, early mid September.
Yeah, is anyone in touch with the group that was quite vocal on the town less serve? And keen on pickleball? We would want those people to be there.
Well, yes, that's who, that's who I've been uh communicating with. For the benefit of Councilor Rovac, who wasn't part of this early discussion. The whole idea was that at this point, the council wanted to be in an information gathering. Mode. So by having a demonstration, you will be able to. See how much interest there is in this because you have the demonstration, people can come. And then they will communicate with you whether they want this to be. Part of the, of the recreation program of the town.
And and.
I'm sorry.
Oh, sorry, I interrupted you. Go ahead.
No, I was saying that it's, this isn't really. It it's not a tennis committee issue because it's a separate program. Perhaps you will decide. That the courts will be used, but that's going to be up to you. But for right now, the purpose was to just. To educate our residents on about pickleball and to. Give the opportunity. For the residents to communicate with all of you on whether they want it or not. Once they find out what it is. But I mean, on on that one list serve, there was, there's, you know, ten people that. That doesn't mean anything.
There were twenty-four people.
All right, twenty-four.
But we have twelve hundred residents, so.
No, no, Jeffrey, the only reason I bring that up is to make sure we are r- responsive to those twenty-four. And they are indeed in a position to attend the demonstration. I I, we do it at a date that is. Well, I don't. Suited to that group is what I'm wondering. Well, you know, would be ideal, obviously. I I don't know how we engineer that.
I don't know how, you know.
Yeah.
I think we just pick a date.
No, sounds good, sounds good. I just want to make sure that we are not, not being, you know, sensitive to a. Even if it's twenty residents.
Those twenty residents, like, you know, if they, if they really want to kind of move the needle, they should be charged with. Trying to get as many people as they can to the event so that they can check it out.
And they will.
That's true. Great.
Well, I've been mostly talking to the people that brought up the idea, Sally Rosenberg and her husband.
Okay, great, great. Thank you, Jeff.
Great. Thank you. Potentially, the last item I wanted to uh raise for the council to discuss tonight. Is what I think of as the uh, the Jack Frank memorial. Uh, topic that, because he brought it to my attention, town benches. Um, and it's, it's a little broader than just town benches.
What about the food trucks?
Talk about food trucks?
Yeah. Inclusion Committee's proposal for the September presence of international food trucks at the pool.
On Sundays.
Community spirit and diversity.
So the issue is whether you want to put that on the agenda in August.
Right.
This is, just to be clear, it's coming from the Equity and Inclusion Committee, but effectively this is food trucks at the pool. On Sundays in September.
In September, yep.
And 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 the the international food trucks is the added element here. Uh, coming from the Equity Inclusion Committee.
How many Sundays in September do we have the pool open for? Is it two or three?
Four. The last, the last Sunday is uh, is. The scheduled dog swim pool closing day.
Debbie, is this, I'm assuming this is consistent with the pool committee?
What, this?
Yeah, I mean, is that, I can't imagine the pool committee having any issue.
No, I don't think they will, but this is another good example of how many food trucks do we want it, you know? In in our parking lot at the pool. So somebody, Shannon and I will will bat around and bring you back some ideas, but uh. That's a lot of food trucks.
Are we agreed to put it on the August agenda anyway, perhaps?
Yes, agreed.
Yes. But be in the non consent agenda so we can continue to discuss it and hash out any details. Okay.
All right, benches.
Benches.
Benches. There was a bench, but there was a town bench by the basketball courts. It fell to disrepair. It got removed. It was never replaced or repaired. Uh, so the question that Jack Frank raised was, well, what's the process to? Maintain town property? He was talking about specifically that bench, but. But there are other benches in town. There are. You know, doggy bag containers around town. There are other town objects. And I guess what I would propose to the council is. That it should be just part of the function of the town manager to.
I think. I think that's already. I think that's already in the budget. I think that any, any item, isn't that correct? Mr. Town Manager. Are there fun, aren't there funds in the budget now to repair and replace any existing um? Uh, capital item? I mean, it's a good question, but.
Yeah, yeah, generally speaking, I think the, I think, I think Steve was. Um, s- sort of getting at if. Each individual item needed to specifically be approved. Is that right, Steve? Or if the the general maintenance of them can be handled administratively?
Out of curiosity, Matt, how do you identify what's not broken?
We can just. Let you take care of it, Matt.
Well, I think that the town attorney can clarify that, right?
Well, has it, has it been budgeted? If it's been budgeted by the council. Then the mayor and manager are authorized to implement that budget. You know, if it, if it hasn't been budgeted yet, you know, then the money needs to be appropriated for that purpose.
But but I think, isn't it in? Matt would know. I mean, I think it's in the, I think it's in the bu- I think it's in the budget. You know, for example, when the, the the tents. So the tent was damaged and. I guess there was money in there to fix it, but. But Matt said it would be a waste of money to fix it for one year. So then he asked the council. For authority for a new one.
I mean, right, I mean, there has to be a maintenance budget presumably for these things, right?
Yes.
The same with like the town, you know, the town truck. So Matt can spend the money that's in the budget. I think this is something that, I think that, I think that there is some issue about at. What level can he spend money without coming to the council?
Right, so.
Right.
So.
I, I mean, I don't, I don't know why that bench wasn't replaced, but the point is, is there is a budget process that should take care of it. And it was prior council that's. So I don't know.
Well, I. Steve, I think Jack's, Jack made this point to me as well. I think Jack's point was that there are. Two, maybe three, maybe more benches in town that have been in disrepair and in at least one case, never replaced for a while. So the question is. Budget issue aside, what is the process that one goes through to, you know, take stock of these assets? These items and like with the streetlights, Matt, you explained to me that the, there is someone. Uh, I think it's the code enforcement, you know, uh, person that will walk around and check to see if all the lights are. Working or not, and then you will act on them accordingly. Is there a similar process for these things? I suspect there isn't, which is reasonable, but should there be one? And what would be helpful to you? You know, do you want us to like with trees? Kind of just say, hey, you know, we've noticed these benches. And w- you know, what, what would be a sensible way for a process? I think the budget issue is the easy part here. Which I suspect he he has the budget, but it's really what's the process?
I, I'm not, you know, with all due respect to former councillor Frank, I don't, I don't know what. If this has been a problem in any way.
Well, there's a bench at the.
At the moment.
Ja- Jack is on the, we can ask him, but there is a bench, for example, you know, on on by Dorset and Surrey. That is making, missing slats. I know that because my daughter loves that little stretch of green and I'm frequently there.
Well, well, the process is that when anyone identifies it, then it's the manager's responsibility to fix it.
Okay, okay. So, so we will do our part to bring it to your attention.
Matt, go around the benches and shake them.
Yeah, I mean, I think, I I think on sort of just an ad hoc informal basis, you know, between myself. And Linda or the maintenance staff guys, if if something's readily apparent to to us. We would, we would make note of it, but, but yeah, you know, if some, if if any of you or any resident says something, certainly um. Are, you know, we are kind of reliant on, on other people's eyes and ears on those things too.
Shannon, what were you gonna say?
This is, I, I don't think this is a, 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 a problem. I think that when any.
Oh, no, it's not a problem.
I think when any repair is identified, the the manager takes care of it.
Shannon, what were you gonna say?
Um, there's a broken one by the tennis courts, um, just FYI.
So Matt, okay, so we have the process. And maybe perhaps at a town update, you may want to just let the town know, hey, guys, if you notice these things broken, let me know. On our part, we will let you know. We have, I think, two.
Yeah, I, I think we, I think we've always encouraged all council members to identify. Repairs needed in any part of the town that they happen to see.
Great.
Perfect. We don't, we don't need to make this more. Complicated than it need be. This should be fairly straightforward. It sounds like we have a process in place.
Right. We just need to. Eurocracy, I love Eurocracy, but we don't.
Oh, my goodness.
Stop that.
Overcomplicate. Overcomplicate. One, one additional item in the last minute, it's, it's, um, the tennis committee has requested for some time now that. Um, we purchase onings uh for the tennis courts. Uh, it's two onings actually. Um, and the point is to provide protection from the sun for older residents. We've got tennis players in their eighties actually who are playing tennis at the moment. Um, and so they they say the cost is no more than a thousand dollars, I believe, for the two of them.
I don't, but that isn't a, but, okay, here's an example, that's not. You know, while we do want to repair things, we don't, we can't just go and start spending money places where. One or two groups think we need to spend it. So I I don't think there's, there's money in the budget for that.
Is there money in the budget for that, Robin?
I don't know the budget in front of me, I can't say.
And and this also goes to, so if the, if the committee makes that recommendation. The committee should send the, should vote on it and send that recommendation to the town manager. So then it goes through a process. Bring it up at a meeting like this.
Uh, the committee has voted on it and have sent it to the town manager, as I understand. Is that correct, Matt?
I don't, I'm not, so then it would go, okay, so.
Well, I think it's a very reasonable. I think first of all, we should do whatever we can to encourage uh old, eldest residents. To move. So wait, hold on, hold on. All I'm saying is if it's recommended to the committee, maybe we. Bring it into the working session next week and we look at it, yeah.
So the process, this is why we need protocols.
Fair enough.
The, the, the recommendation, I was not, we discuss everything that comes in from a committee. At our leadership meeting and then we, the council president decides whether to put it on this agenda. I, I'm not sure that we ever got that recommendation.
We can.
So, so we can make sure that the liaisons. Maybe it should be the liaison puts the recommendation to.
Let's just resend it. Let's just resend it, Robin.
I think I might be the new liaison to the tennis committee.
You are, you are.
Excellent.
So I should probably reach out to them.
It's all about it being efficient. It's all about being efficient.
Right.
Not bureaucracy, just, just efficient.
But we, but we, we have to have a process and we have to have, make sure that everybody has an opportunity to have input into this because. Just because the tennis committee wants to spend a thousand dollars on something, maybe another committee wants to spend a thousand dollars on something else. Then it's up to you to decide.
It certainly is, but it, we, it needs to get on the agenda is the point.
Right. So. I guess I'd say Shannon, as, as the committee liaison to the tennis committee. If you can just verify that this is the recommendation of the tennis committee, we'll put it on the agenda for the August meeting. To discuss and consider.
And so would I then, I mean, I can ask that, this of them, but is it your understanding that they already have a quote?
I believe they do, yeah. I mean, Carrie Walford is the chair, so it's just email Carrie.
Okay.
But it, it, it isn't up to the committee to get the quote. It's up to the manager to get the quote.
What they were trying to say with the quote is that it's not expensive.
Anyway.
Right, that, that, that sounds good.
I'm happy to touch base as well, Shannon. I had seen, I I saw that she said it was five hundred dollars. I, I. I, what I had seen was something she had sent before that was like. Three thousand dollars.
This is her latest, this was her latest um, quote.
So this is not an agenda item for tonight. And this is an exam, you know, we want to have efficient. Work sessions. We want to stick to the agenda that that is not an emergency. And it has to be decided in context with. Everything else. It's not in the budget.
Right. So we can consider it as a non consent item at the August council meeting.
Thank you.
All right. I think that's it. We have covered a tremendous amount of ground. Lot of progress. Appreciate everyone's good humor and uh.
We finished more or less all the time too. Look at that.
Well done, well done.
Do we make the next meeting, though? Should we put on our calendars?
Yes, we do, we do, we do set the date for the next work session, correct?
So. Like Monday, August sixteenth?
That's okay, a seven o'clock start?
Wait a second, not there yet.
I think you decided that that these meetings should be at seven.
Yeah, I don't think, I I'm only a maybe. I'm going to be away on vacation. And the seven to nine time could take me out, you know. But.
Do you, do you have a different time you prefer?
I could possibly make it happen for five o'clock, but I know I can't do seven to nine.
Uh, how about Kavir and Steve? Because that's um.
Well, I, I can, I can start at five on a Monday.
I can start at five on that day because I will be on vacation, but just with my in-laws in Minnesota, so I can dial in.
I like all this.
You're, you're very happy to dial it, is what you're saying.
Exactly. I like the scheduled departure.
Kavir, this is being recorded.
Monday, we can, we can uh void that out. Monday, August sixteen, and we will see everyone. On Monday, August.
At five PM.
Okay.
Before that, we will see you, before that, we will see you on Monday, August second at seven PM.
Right.
To you then. Thank you, Steve. Thank you, everyone.
Good evening, everyone.
Bye. Bye. Thanks.